Charles is out and so Lisa has the steering wheel tonight, so hopefully she'll use her power for good, not evil.
No promises.
And next to you is...
Manny.
Manny? Manny. Are you a planner Manny?
I am a planner.
Sorry?
I'm a contract planner, just started with the City of Menifee back in January.
Very good.
So when I have the first item.
Hey.
Commissioner Folsom.
Here.
Commissioner Carwin.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Vice Chair Sobek.
Here.
Chair Thomas.
Here. Let's go ahead and stand for the flag salute and in honor of Commissioner Folsom's departure, perhaps he could lead that for us tonight.
Our pledge to the citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any agenda modifications or...
No, sir.
Okay. Do I have any presentations? Do we have any public comments?
Yes. Katie Munir?
Well, I guess Mr. Thomas kind of made it official. Mr. Folsom, you are leaving. I heard you're taking a job out of the area. Is that actually the reason or are you jumping ship before this city goes down like Beaumont did? If that's the case, you are one smart guy to get the heck out of here. And does that mean that your house will now be a rental and we're adding one more rental to the market? Anyway, my next topic. I'm sickened by the crime that's happened in this city and I know you all are aware of what's happened. I want to ask for the addresses of all halfway houses in this city. I want to know who runs them. I want to know who's monitoring them. I want to know if they have 24-hour monitoring. How many residents live in each and what is allowed in those homes? How often are checks made to see they are complying with regulations? I want those that have mentally ill and those that have recovering addicts. Are there supervisors on site at these places? We have panhandlers at every street corner, every day at the off-ramp. We have them in every shopping center. I have been approached countless times as everybody else has been. People have been threatened. People have had things taken from them by these people that have nowhere to go, no jobs, no future, no nothing. I want to know what the city is going to do about this. I want to know what the city's real crime rate is. Captain Judge at a recent meeting said the crime rate was down. Does that mean that last year it was up 200%? So this year it's only at 199% and that means it's gone down? I want some figures and I want to know what goes on in this city so we're all safe.
No further speakers.
We have approval of the minutes on April 22nd. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, yeah, you weren't here, were you?
The 29th.
We're the 22nd, okay. So do we have a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes of the meeting of April 29th?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 29th.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll note Commissioner Folsom abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. Nothing on the consent calendar, that moves us to item 9.1, public hearing for the conditional use permit, number 2015-21, 45 and 46. Was this properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have we received any correspondence or...
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have a... Who's giving the presentation, staff report?
We have our contract planner Manny Baeza giving the staff report.
Very good.
Chairman Thomas, members of the commission. This is a three-part application for three personal service uses at the recently approved Town Center Marketplace. The first CUP application is for a 1,400-square-foot body waxing salon. The second application is for a 1,400-square-foot nail salon. And the third application is for a 1,000-square-foot hairstylist barber. Again, these are all at the Town Center Marketplace. It's a recently approved 100,000-square-foot shopping center. According to the Town Center specific plan, all personal services require a conditional use permit. Here's an image of the project site. It's in an urbanized area of the city. It's located at the southwest corner of Newport Road and Han Road. Here's zoning for the project site. It currently has a zoning of Planning Area 3 of the Town Center Commercial specific plan. Surrounding zoning includes the New House specific plan to the north. To the south is Town Center specific plan, mixed use, and also open space water. To the east is the Countryside specific plan. And to the west is the Town Center specific plan, mixed use. Existing land uses for the site, or the site actually is vacant currently. Surrounding land uses include the Newport Town Square to the north. It has primarily restaurant uses and a Circle K gas station. To the south and west is mostly vacant land and also the Paloma Channel. To the east of the project site is the Countryside Marketplace Development. It consists of mainly a big-box retail commercial. There are also a number of restaurants. And there are also personal services here at the center. Three of them are the Supercuts, the Massage Envy, and also a Happy Nails and Spa Nail Salon. I'd like to mention that none of these personal service uses required a conditional use permit. They're allowed by right in the specific plan.
So they're allowed by right, by the specific plan?
By the, by the specific plan.
So why are we doing this?
Here is the site plan for the Town Center Marketplace. The project would be located near the corner of, this one, the European Waxing would be located near the corner of Newport Road and Han Road. It's located here in red. It has three to six employees at any given time. Most of the appointments, 80% of the appointments are made, are, that's how they see their customers. And the average duration of visit is 30 minutes. The two other conditional use permit uses, the Nikki Nails and the Sports Clips are located on the opposite side of the center. For the Nikki Nails, they would have three to four employees. They're at a given time. Approximately half of the appointment, or half of the customers are seen by appointment. And most visits last from between 45 to 60 minutes. For the Sports Clips, there would be two to four employees at a given time. And most customer visits last approximately 30 minutes. In reviewing the application, we find that these uses are consistent with shopping center development. These uses would require no additional parking. In addition, these uses will be subject to the conditions of approval of the overall development plot plan 2014-009. So with that, staff is recommending approval of all three requests, subject to the conditions of approval and also the findings. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. I have a question, but does any other of the commissioners have any questions of staff based on the presentation?
Yeah, I have one. Mr. Baeza, did you say that these businesses don't require conditional use permits?
Across the street at the Countryside Marketplace is a different specific plan. And in that specific plan, these are, personal services are allowed by right.
But in this one, they're not?
They're not.
I understand. I was wondering why we were doing this, if they have...
I just noted it because it's an unusual requirement to have a conditional use permit for these types of personal services, like a beautician or nail salon.
And then there was one slide you showed which had the zoning for each of the...
I'll bring it back up.
The flats, yeah, that one. So this is number three, correct?
Correct.
It says office slash commercial?
That's right.
So this falls under that commercial definition?
The overall development, yeah, fell under that.
I understand. That's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this moment?
Okay, I do have one. Can we go back, go forward to the slide where it showed the layout? No, the...
Object.
There you go. And from, from reading this, the only entrances I see are off of, oh no, okay, so there's three. There's the main entrance on Han, there's a right-in at the south portion, and then there's a, is that a right-in of Newport?
That would be...
Four entrances. There's one also on the south end of the property. It's...
Oh, that one farther down?
Yeah. Right-in at the first driveway at Newport, right-out at the second driveway, and full access at the main driveway.
Now, if you, if you look in the, in the staff report farther down on that southern one, it looks like, let me find the map here, it looks like it, it has a right-in, but it also has a straight-in, right-out. Isn't that right?
Yes. That driveway and access was coordinated with the Countryside Marketplace to the east. It was all reviewed and approved under the plot plan for the entire shopping center.
Okay. So this would have been approved when we were negotiating the, the whole Town Center project?
When we were reviewing the plot plan for the shopping center, for the entire shopping center.
For the entire shopping center, okay. Okay.
I did have a question for staff. Just had a question on the hours of operation were inconsistent between the staff report and the CUP.
Yeah, actually, that was put in there, well, the, the broadest range of hours was for the Nikki Nails, or one of them ran from eight in the morning till eight in the evening, Monday through Friday. So what we did is went ahead and, and set it an hour before and an hour after so that they could set up. And then we just applied that standard to the other uses, in fairness.
Okay. I just wanted to understand that, so thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:09. Do we have any public speakers or comments on this? Okay. Do we have the applicant here? Or is that now, is he for all three, or do we have each applicant here?
Mr. Hollander, he represents all three.
All three?
Yeah, all three applications.
Yeah, Bart Hollander with Rich Development. We're the developers of the project and I'm here to represent, as Manny stated, all three of the applicants or the businesses.
Okay. Do you have, you want to make any comments or any presentation or anything?
No, no, not really. I think it's pretty straightforward. I think as was mentioned, it's just the anomaly of how this specific plan was written. These are pretty typical uses in a shopping center, but we have to adhere to how the specific plan was conformed and so we're here to get the CUP approval from the commission.
Okay. If we don't have any other public comments or presentations, we, I don't have my little cheat sheet, we can close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close it.
I just have one more staff question. We went through that whole chapter on zoning for the EDCs with...
This is exempt from that because it's specific plan overrides it.
Because it's exempt from, okay, that's what I was going to ask. All right. But it would comply anyway, wouldn't it?
I think for the most part, I couldn't tell you in detail.
Generally, the Economic Development Corridor goals is for high-quality development, mix of uses. This shopping center and the specific plan overall has quite a few development standards over and above what our development code requires, and it also allows for mixed use. So you're getting Economic Development Corridor through the specific plan, really.
What I was just concerned with was whether any decision we make here is going to conflict with the chapter we just approved, if and when it comes in.
I wouldn't imagine it would.
I wouldn't either, but that's why I'm asking staff, just to make sure.
Uh...
Not aware of any conflict? All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Probably just one, but I did call staff today and ask this question and I just didn't know if we needed to address it at all. And it was about the advertising, sometimes on the windows of the body waxing salon. I kind of looked up some pictures online today and some of them were body waxing of faces and done very tastefully and some were a little bit more of the body. And so I didn't know on your, on your advertising, on your window displays, if we needed to put any kind of wording or verbiage in, or is it all taken care of with what we have in place with our sign guidelines?
It should be covered by the signed program, which has requirements for what kind of signage the tenants can put up. And there's language in the requirements about tasteful signs and I think, what was the word?
Indecent signage, it's prohibited.
Okay. Okay. So that was just the question.
I'd be happy to comment to the...
Sure. That would be great.
As the developers and operators of the shopping center, we require landlord approval of all signage in all of our leases, and it's certainly not anything we want, you know. We're not going to condone it or allow it, so I really don't think it's going to be an issue.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close, like I say, close the public hearing and then bring it back to the dials for discussion. Do we have any questions, thoughts, changes, concerns on either of the three conditional use permits from the commission?
I'm good.
I think that my vision has been really corrupted by this project. I had envisioned that, that one area would be office space and commercial, but what they're putting in is another addition to the cluster of junk food restaurants we have already in this city. And I have a real problem with that. And that's more perception. I just have a problem with that being, with these particular venues being cited in that particular location. And so for me, putting in those types of services, it kind of conflicts with my vision of what the vision for this area should be. And I was looking at it as being more civic-oriented with office space and a higher level of I just have a problem with that. So I'll just leave it at that.
Just a question for staff then, just to follow up on that. Is there any requirement in the specific plan as to the percentage of office that's required?
There's no requirement established.
I do have one question on page four of seven. It talks about the applicants pulling your building permits and, but because they're small businesses, proprietor, proprietors have elected to put off the developing the floor plans until approvals by the city. So are we going to see floor plans then for each of these? Is that administrative approval?
That's administrative approval. You wouldn't see floor plans typically.
Okay. Okay. I think that's the only question. As I say, it's a pretty straightforward project. I don't see any problems other than maybe the industrial waste from body waxing besides that, but do we have any other, what was the feeling of the commission as far as approving these conditional use permits? I understand what you feel on that, as far as what you, what you'd want there.
I think it's telling that directly across the street, we wouldn't even have to comment on it, you know? It seems a little inconsistent to deny it directly across the street from an area that's, you know, that's zoned to handle it. I do know, I don't know anything about the proposed body waxing or nail salon, but Sports Clips is a growing franchise geared towards men. My son loves it. So I think that the type of services they're offering here is consistent with the type of, I, I do agree with the comment, the reason I asked about that zoning question because I saw that office and on this plan, I don't see a single thing that says office space on it. So it says office slash commercial, so I was concerned that would be in violation of some sort of plan by not having any offices. But that being said, you're not going to have an office next to a Buffalo Wild Wings anyway. So I, I think it's, I think it'd be an excellent addition to the center and I'm in favor of it.
I, I see there's, it's a balance of a shopping center. There's still two vanilla shells available and maybe they could go after some more healthy things, you never know. So I'm, it's, it's a, looks like a nice shopping center.
And I think for the newer commissioners, you might want to pull out the Town Center specific plan and look at the other areas because there is commercial and office space and there's, you know, restaurants and big restaurants and other types of things that will come just west of all that, so...
I was just concerned because this is the only one that said office on it and it's the only one without any office, so that's why I was concerned.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. If we don't have any opposition to this, then would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I would like to abstain. I don't like to vote.
Okay. Well, you can vote no.
Do we need to do them individually?
Um, I believe, do we do them as well?
Make a motion first. I'd like to make a motion, we approve, where is it? It's not up on the screen.
Additional use permit?
Conditional use permit number 2015-021. Do I need to...
You can do it.
Okay.
Why just do one at a time? Okay. One at a time.
All right.
And I'll, I'll second that. Do we need a roll call?
Please. Commissioner Folsom.
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes. And the rest of them?
Okay. Like to make a motion, we approve conditional use permit 2015-045.
Second.
Commissioner Folsom.
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion, we approve conditional use permit number 2015-046.
I'll second that one.
Commissioner Folsom.
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Okay.
And just for the record, the motions were to approve the CUPs, but you meant approve the resolutions.
Okay.
Correct?
Oh, correct up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Resolution PC, okay. Yes. Okay. Then we'll move on to item number 9.2. The Sonic at the Town Center Marketplace. I have kind of a side question to this. This has to do with the signage and various other things. Did the Countryside Marketplace ever finish their signed program and submit it to the city?
No.
No. Okay. Interesting. Okay.
I just have one other question on that last thing, doesn't affect the vote at all. Is, is this the end of the line or does that have to go to city council?
That's the end of the line.
That's the end of the line, so that's a done deal. Hey, look, we accomplished something.
There you go. So we get free body waxing, toenails and hair?
I want to see you declare that on your form.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I have to say, I do not accept gifts.
Yes. There you go. Has this been properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have we received any correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have...
Staff report?
Staff report, thank you.
Yes, we have a brief staff report from our contract planner, Russell Brady.
Okay. I know Russell.
Thank you, Russell Brady presenting for staff, agenda item number 9.2, consisting of plot plan number 2015-018, Sonic at the Town Center Marketplace, a theme for the evening, I guess. The project, some of the last one, located westerly of Han Road, southerly of Newport Road, within the southern portion of the Town Center Marketplace. The existing zoning specific plan surrounding generally specific plan to the north, south and east and west. Current land use is vacant, surrounding is generally vacant and commercial, as well as the Paloma Wash to the east, south and west. Plot plan number 2015-018, which was applied as a minor plot plan, administrative plot plan, is for approval of the exterior elevations and signage for a fast-food restaurant with drive-through Sonic. The fast-food restaurant pad, including parking and surrounding landscaping, was approved under plot plan number 2014-009, the Town Center Marketplace. The signed plan included for Sonic includes the proposed wall-mounted signs and freestanding signs. A total of 11 wall-mounted signs and posters and 19 freestanding signs and menu boards are proposed for Sonic. Here showing the site plan in relation to the overall Town Center. It's kind of the southern area of the site, as noted in the previous project, that driveway that lines up with the marketplace across the street. Here's the Sonic showing the drive-through.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Go back to that drive-through. You said lines up with the Countryside Marketplace. Is there a light right there?
I believe there is at that one, yeah.
Which one is it? Is that, it's not the one going into Santa Rosa, it's the one just north of that?
It's the last, it's the last driveway into the marketplace. If you turn left in there, it's behind Bevmo when you go in there.
Behind Bevmo? No, no, it's before Bevmo, right?
At the In-N-Out.
It's at the In-N-Out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
You can see here on the aerial, it would be this lineup which goes to the roundabout.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because I was thinking, how are they going to get out of there without killing themselves on that road, so...
It's also shown here on the site plan, so the drive-through, the out, primary outdoor patio area immediately adjacent to the building, as well as secondary patio area, as well as the 14 drive-in diagonal spaces west, or sorry, south of the main building. Here showing the architecture for the building. The top, the east side facing Han Road, and the bottom one, the west side of the building kind of facing interior to the site. We worked with the applicant on the architecture, in particular including some of the trellis, the lighting, and some of the color choices and treatments to the architecture so that it's more consistent with the architecture for the center. Here showing the north and south sides of the building. The south side, you can kind of see the, the profile of the canopy covering the patio Here showing the flat-roofed drive-in canopy that would cover the two sides of the drive-in, the 14 drive-in spaces. You can see there though, so the menu ordering board attached for each space. Move on to the signs. First, the wall-mounted signs. Here showing the primary signs for Sonic. Two of them would be 32 square feet in size and then one at 29.6 square feet. These are located on the east, west and north sides of the buildings, as shown on the elevations. There are three LED signs which would all be located on the south side of the building facing the primary patio area, located underneath the canopy, as shown here, for drive-through open, full menu all day and fresh every time. Here the, what we refer to as the blue dot signs, four total at 22.1 square feet each. There would be two located on either side of the east and west sides of the building, as shown here and as conditioned for the project. It's been required that these not be truly signs, but they include lifestyle or pictures of the City of Menifee so that it's not really advertising specials of the day or, you know, or of the month, whatever, but that it be more of a, a theme to tie into the building.
So those are hard paper signs or plastic signs or are they monitors?
I believe they're rear-lit signs, if I remember right, but we'd have to confirm with the applicant on that. Lastly, as far as the wall-mounted signs, here's a graphic panel, as shown here in this photo, of the cherry limeade which is iconic to the Sonic brand that they have on the southerly side of the building, again, also under the canopy. To move on to the freestanding signs, first with the drive-through signs, the drive-through entrance and exit signs, two of those at three square feet each, the height bar as you enter the drive-through, and then the menu board and ordering speaker and screen. And the 14 drive-in menu boards for each space. This is really what drives up the number of freestanding signs because there's one of these for each of the spaces as it's operated by Sonic to have that convenience for how the drive-ins operate, to have that menu board right there for each of the spaces. As I noted, this was taken in as a minor plot plan, which would normally be reviewed and approved administratively by staff. However, since the specific plan in the Town Center sign program limits wall signs to a maximum of three, and as noted, they are proposing 11 total wall signs, we've moved this up to the commission's consideration. And pursuant to specific plan section 7.2.7, the planning commission does have the authority under the substantial performance determination to review and otherwise approve the proposed under the substantial performance determination, uh, to review and otherwise approve, um, the proposed, uh, project and the signs proposed with it. Um, the applicant has stated that the amount and type of signs is iconic to their brand and therefore necessary. Um, the blue dots, as I mentioned, those are required, are conditioned to include lifestyle, not necessarily advertising. Uh, and then the graphic panel, uh, isn't, you know, purely a sign. Uh, we, we've generally classified it as a sign in the total count, but that it's not, um, advertising or really identifying the tenant, that it's more, um, if you want to call it artistic in nature, or more of an accent feature than a true, uh, sign.
Can you go back to those bigger ones? No, 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 forward, or, yeah, those, so, these are not, are these gonna be at each, uh, parking spot, right?
Yes.
Uh, each drive-in spaces.
But you're not counting these as the signs, right?
Uh, we are in the total count of freestanding signs.
But you're saying there's only eleven, and how many parking spots are there?
Sorry, that there's eleven wall-mounted signs.
Oh, okay.
And the total for freestanding signs, I think was, um, twenty-something, or?
Fourteen of these, okay. That's, I was trying to get your numbers right up, okay. Okay.
Sorry, nineteen total freestanding signs, fourteen of which would be the drive-in menu ones. Um, and so although the, the standards are exceeded per the specific plan and the Town Center sign program, um, the, as noted, the planning commission has the authority under the specific plan section seven point two seven to determine, uh, the project's substantial conforms, uh, as also, and also to note, the overall design and purpose of the signs are in compliance with the intent of the specific plan, even if it isn't necessarily consistent with the standards of the specific plan.
Now, does the, uh, developer owner have to sign on of this exceeding the specific plan standard? Or is it just the city has to sign off on it?
Technically, the city has to sign off on it. Uh, the sign program prepared by the owner of the shopping center, though, does require that each tenant get their approval before installation of any signage.
And I assume they have of this, these excess signs, they've already received approval?
Yes.
Yeah? Yes, or yes? Okay. I'm sure, okay.
And if I can just clarify this through staff or through the developer, Sonic is a national brand. They put these stores up all over the place. This is the same number of signs they're putting up everywhere?
That's exactly right.
Uh, and so based on that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution number fifteen twenty eleven, or two, sorry, two hundred and eleven, approving plot plan number twenty fifteen dash oh one eight, subject to the dash conditions and based upon the findings and conclusions incorporated in staff, in the resolution. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Does, um, the commission have any technical questions of staff at this point?
I do. For the purposes of tonight's vote, are we only focusing on the sign issue, or are we folk, or, because the rest has been approved? Or are we looking at the entire project?
I would highlight the signs, since that's the primary reason why it's before the planning commission. However, the, technically, the entire plot plan, uh, is...
Well, the elevations for the Sonics, um, and the carport structures and the signage is what's in front of you. The layout, the drive-through, the parking, that was all reviewed and approved under the plot plan for the entire shopping center.
So can you tell me where an area on this property would be for, for loading in and out of product? Like, if they're gonna bring an eighteen-wheeler up to supply the place, where does that truck park?
Very carefully.
The hours of operation have been conditioned that there's no deliveries during peak hours. Um, we, we reviewed it when we looked at the plot plan, and, uh, also, our ordinances don't require a loading space unless the building's square footage is over seven thousand five hundred square feet.
Is this a twenty-four hour operation?
No.
So, when you say peak hours, will there be times when they are open to the public where loading in and out is permitted?
Yes, it's possible.
So in that particular case, where do trucks park?
In the drive-aisles, but not during peak hours that are lunchtime or peak dinner times.
From what I understand, it would be similar to the Menifee Marketplace, where the trucks sometimes, um, park and unload, uh, in those smaller areas during shopping time hours, I've been there.
That's exactly what I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
Which has been bothersome to me as a citizen, and...
Yeah.
So that's why I was concerned about that, but...
But you just answered a question, 'cause I kind of wondered that myself, but this, it has to be a certain square footage of the building. That's why there's such a nice, uh, rear, uh, back, uh...
Through the big boxes.
Loading and unloading behind the big boxes at Menifee Market, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Uh, those are my technical questions.
Okay. Commissioner Phillips, even though you're not in love with the project, do you have any questions?
No. No, I don't have any questions. Uh, same, um, concerns that I had earlier, that I mentioned, uh, apply here. Um, with the addition of the fact that there's too many signs. I just have a problem with all those signs, as well as, uh, my other concerns.
Any questions?
Uh, just with regard to the architecture, uh, is this Sonic essentially based on a prototype? That's just then been modified?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, if we don't have any other technical questions, then, um, and I think I already asked, we didn't receive any correspondence, right?
No, sir.
Are any public speakers?
Um, we do have public speakers.
We do have public speaker, okay.
Would you like to open?
So let's go ahead and open the, uh, public hearing then, at seven thirty-four, and before the public speakers want, does the applicant want to speak?
I don't have any specific speaker.
Okay, and go ahead, we have, uh, public speakers?
Katie Munir?
I have to say, I cook some really good burgers and fries at home, so I think we're letting so many of these same things in. I don't do a lot of shopping in this city, other than grocery shopping. I choose to go to Marietta, to Temecula, to Riverside, somewhere other than here. But I think we're letting in too many liquor stores, too many waxing places, too many hair places, now too many burger places. There's gonna be one on every corner. When does it stop with the same thing? Let's get something different in the city, something besides liquor stores and bars and all the same stuff. I just think it needs to end. Somebody needs to say enough is enough, and let's, don't put another junk food place in, or another whatever. Not that I'm saying Sonic necessarily is, but we have In-N-Out, we have McDonald's, we have Carl's Jr., we have Jack in the Box, we have, uh, the list goes on and on. We have every conceivable hamburger place there is. Now we have Five Guys that just opened. I think we're inundated with more of the same things. Let's think about what we're putting in and get something in with some class or some character, or different than every other city that has stuff right down the freeway.
No further speakers.
No further speakers, okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven thirty-six and bring it to the dais for discussion. I have a few things, but, uh, starting, Commissioner Folsom, start with you. Do you have any comments, uh, critiques, uh, changes, concerns?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, it's, it's based on a, a national concept that they're doing everywhere else, and it doesn't seem like this is anything out of the ordinary.
Commissioner, uh, Sobek?
Okay. Um, I would just, um, there's, there are a couple of things on the, um, on the blue dot signs. Um, I was wondering if you would take into consideration, uh, you had a choice, you said that between the pictures of Menifee or lifestyle. And I know that a lot of our people that live here, they have always liked the rural environment, and that's been a big thing in a lot of our public hearings. And I was wondering if you would take into consideration, just on your four, um, blue dot signs, to either talk with our historical society and get some pictures from them, or if you want active pictures, um, we've got the skate park, we've got our ballfields, we have Menifee Lakes, um, we have the golf course. And so I would like to see those, instead of just generic pictures, I'd like to see something people can call home. So that would be a, a question, and then, um, I know this isn't up for discussion tonight, what we're looking at, but one thing that did concern me was the out, the doors to the outside restrooms. And I know that you, I don't, I understand that you probably have those, because you don't have the indoor seating area.
Right.
But, um, I did kind of go online and look up some reviews on Sonic and your outdoor restrooms, and, um, there was just some things that stuck out to me, which vandalism was a, a big thing with your outdoor restrooms. Also, um, there was one city that locked their restrooms at nine PM. And I can understand that probably to have to do with vandalism and to keep people out. But your Sonic is gonna be down the street from Santa Rosa Academy, which will pretty soon have a ball field, and they'll have out, they'll have sports in the evening. It's close to Paloma Valley High School, which they will have, um, football games in the fall. And, and I'm sure a lot of teenagers will like, enjoy going there. So, um, some of the comments were, um, because they were outside restrooms, sometimes they were dirty and nasty. And so, I, I, that, that concerns me as being a resident here and the citizens. And I don't know if you can do anything about the, is there outdoor cameras outside of the restroom area? Where we, you know, I don't know, on staff, outdoor cameras? I don't know, I just wish there wasn't outdoor restrooms to the outdoors.
There's the key system, where you have to go inside and get the key or coins, or something like that.
I just wanted to, if you like.
I, I would.
Come up to the dais and give your name?
Please. It's 'cause that was a concern that I, I had.
I'm Casey Surin, the franchisee for Sonic, the one building this restaurant. Um, this is an issue that we deal with at all of our stores that, um, have bathrooms that go to the outside. It's something that we're continuing to working on and trying to improve. Um, one of the things that we've done to improve things at one of our stores, and we're just trying this out, and it's working phenomenally well, is the token system. And because we have car hop skating out to, um, you know, drive-in stalls all the time, they can just keep the tokens in their aprons, and then as a guest, you know, requests a token, they could just give the token. So that way you don't have to close it at nine for people, for guests at midnight that are eleven PM before we close that may need to use the restroom. Um, and it helps, you know, kind of limit that, that vandalism. So it's, it's, um, something we're, we're improving, so.
Thank you.
We'll make a commitment to, to trying to make that a non-issue here.
Yeah, could we, could we look at that, um, either tokens or cameras out in that area?
Yeah, we, we have cameras there. Um, they're tough to monitor at all times. For petty things, like someone, um, you know, vandalizing or, or carving something into a mirror, to try and pursue that damages, all that type of stuff, and go review the cameras, it's, it's more work than it's worth. So the cameras don't do a whole lot in that respect. The co, token system really works well. The combo system we've tried, uh, doesn't work as well, because people share combos. The next thing you know, everyone knows the combo and, um, doesn't work as well. But the token system works phenomenally well, and so that's what we're planning on using.
I was just thinking of cameras, and it keeps honest person honest, maybe if there's a homeless person, they're wanting to use a restroom outdoor, it might just keep, it, it might just be, um, a preventive type of thing along...
Just the visual of seeing the camera.
Along, along with, with using the token, so, so thank you for, um...
Absolutely.
That was, that was a concern, so.
And I, I, I hope it's a non-issue here.
Thank you, Casey. Um, and then, um, I know just, this is, um, the signage to me, what I read is iconic to, to Sonic, so I'm fine with the signs, um, but since we have a developer here, um, to go with what Mrs. Munir said, and Mr. Phillips, I know that you have a couple empty, um, shelves there. And, uh, we just, we, the, we do hear a lot from, uh, our residents of some healthy, um, choices. We, we really don't have any healthy choices. We don't have any juice it ups, we don't have, I, I don't know what they're all called, but, um, some of the natural food places. So that, that's a, that's a desire here, and since you have a couple empty shelves, just to be aware of that, we do get a lot of requests, we do want some healthy choices. Thank you.
Commissioner Kerwin, do you have any comments?
I really wish there was a website we could go to and order businesses for the city of Menifee. I wish that we could go to Amazon, click a button, and have whatever business we want to come here. Unfortunately, based on our population dynamics, we do not have that option. There are some cities that can, because they're turning people away, there's so many who want it with us. We're still in the building phase, and we have to dance with the ones that brung us. Um, Sonic is a well-established chain. I think it's a step above some of the more common fast food places. You don't see as many Sonic around, and I think that's nice. I think it's a, um, the, the retro theme to it is, is sets it apart a little bit from the regular storefront griddle burger place, you know, it's got kind of a kitschy theme to it, which is fun. Hopefully, as these types of businesses come to town and thrive, that will show other businesses that we are growing and thriving, and we can build on that. In the meantime, we have to support some of these... I think this is a, a nice quality business, and, uh, that's, that, that's my one, I, I do agree with the sentiments of the people in the city. I mean, like, if you go on any social media, it says, "Why can't we get a Trader Joe's in the city of Menifee?" That's the number one thing I see every, and I was, "Well, it's up to Trader Joe's, they don't want to come here, so nothing we can do about it." Till we build forty thousand more houses, so, um, and then...
What would be appropriate income level?
Well, ironically...
And enough college graduates, that was their...
Ironically, the city that Trader Joe's would want to go in is a city that nobody in Menifee wants to live in. You know, they want the rural open park areas, which are phenomenal for quality of life, but Trader Joe's doesn't have enough income from that kind of stream to build a store there. That's why it's in Temecula, not Menifee. So that's the catch-twenty-two that we're in. Um, so I say all of that to say I'm in favor of this. The signs, they're not littering the building, I mean, the three, the three surfaces only have one on them each. And the extra signs, the blue dots, I consider those to be, I agree with staff, that I could consider them to be yard installations. And then, under the canopy, that's just kind of borderline menu stuff. So I, I'm fine with the signage, and I would probably vote to approve this.
Commissioner Phillips?
I've already made my comments. I would have no problem if they relocated this particular venue somewhere else, but I just don't like it where it is.
Um, one thing, if we could go back to this, the circulation, the layout, um, I, I'm for the project, just want to fine-tune it a little bit. We have this problem with anything that has a drive-through along the street. We really don't want to look at the cars like queued up there. So, although we're not reviewing landscaping here, um, I would like to suggest that there be a trellis along the, uh, what is that, the east side of the, the queuing, the driveway there, so that when you're driving along Han, you don't have to look at all the cars lined up there. Trellis or landscaping or something?
Uh, what's been approved and, uh, what's shown on the plans now is a berm with landscaping on top of the berm to create that barrier, so that the drive-through is not visible. A conceptual plan was approved with the shopping center, and the developer's now processing their working drawings. So a berm has been provided.
How high is the berm, do you know?
Um, Bart, do you recall the height of the berm?
Yeah, I, I just, to reiterate what Lisa said, we don't, we think the berm and the landscaping above the berm is going to accomplish the same thing that you were suggesting, it's just in probably...
Would you mind stepping to the podium?
Go ahead, go ahead and step to the podium, yeah, we'll, that way it'll record it. So go ahead and just repeat what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, as Lisa was stating, we are going to berm and then put landscaping hedges above the berm, which will, in effect, accomplish the same thing you're suggesting, and we think it's gonna be very aesthetically appealing in the way we're proposing to do it.
Okay. Um, if you go back to one of the elevations, um, just notice, I just wanted to clarify, the, along the, the bottom, and that's just, is that brick veneer, a fake facade brick, brick veneer, or?
If I, if I remember correctly, yes.
Okay, maybe the applicant wants to, one of them, step up here, 'cause I have a couple questions. Um, and then, on the pilasters or the, the poles going up, that's brick veneer too. What is the brown? Is that stucco?
Um, yeah, my name's Jim Delwell, I'm with Feeder Group. Um, the, the, the pilasters, yeah, that is a brick veneer, and, and we also have a different color of brick veneer along the base.
Okay.
Uh, what's above that is painted stucco.
Painted stucco, okay, and then the gray is stucco or metal?
Uh, the gray, the gray top piece is, it's a, it's a white stucco again.
It's a white stucco, okay. Uh, can we look at the other elevations, the other signs, okay. Um, now if you go back to your, the actual live pic, not live, but, uh, pictures of, uh, in here, now I see how they have the stone on this? I, I'm kind of tending towards that. If you look at everything in the Countryside Marketplace, it's stone. And just about every other project that we've approved in here, it's, this is the, the... And just about every other project that we've approved in here, this is the, the school district that's gonna go across the street, everything has more of a natural element to it. And while the brick is somewhat natural, we would like to kind of carry the theme from countryside over here. And when we, everything that goes into Town Center, we're gonna be kind of pushing that more natural environment, natural element. So could you, what are your suggestions possibly for working some more stone or more natural elements into it?
Well, what we, the reason why we have the, the brick, the brick veneer is to match the rest of the center, the elevations that were approved with the rest of the center.
What's the center?
And so the, the intent is, is to make this building more blend with the existing center that's being proposed behind it.
Okay, so the rest of the elevations are all brick? Is that the theme over there?
Yes. Every other building uses the same, two types of brick veneer that is on this building.
Did we see this or was this, wasn't it?
This was approved, I believe it was December thirtieth of two thousand fourteen. It was approved by the Community Development Director. The specific plan allowed the Community Development Director to approve a, a plot plan for the shopping center. We did send it out for the administrative approval.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, I think I had one other question. We talked about the traffic light. I think that was it. Yeah, I believe that was it. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions or comments, concerns?
Just if you get over to Menifee Lakes right now, you'll, and if you want pictures, there's two Canadian geese and five babies.
Okay. I believe, oh. Now, each of these parking spots has those speakers on it, right? Okay. One thing I've noticed, I travel around a lot, not as much as I used to. I used to travel three states driving, and I've seen many of your places and many other restaurants in my windshield years. And sometimes the speakers are so loud and obnoxious. What is the decibel level? Is there a decibel restriction on these?
Generally, I think it would be subject to the city's existing, you know, noise standards for, excuse me, for commercial developments. And in addition, you know, the location of this next to Han Road, I would imagine a lot of the vehicle noise would drown out many of the speakers, but...
Well, that's all I have. Do we have any, if we don't have any other comments, corrections, or do we have a motion to approve this project?
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number PC one five dash two one one, approving plot plan number two thousand fifteen dash zero one eight.
I second.
Well, this is actually three of them, right?
No.
No, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I turned back to the wrong one. I apologize. Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Folsom?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Vice Chair Slobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Make us some burgers.
They have a happy hour. Did you know that? For, they have a happy hour for shake, for shakes or something. Oh, my granddaughter was telling me.
Oh, very good. Very good. Okay, we don't have any discussion items. Do we have any interim Community Development Director comments, Lisa?
No.
Okay. Do you love the power? Do you feel it? Okay. Any other, I have something, but commissioners have any other comments or questions in general?
I would just like to say, as you mentioned, this is my last...
The big hurrah.
This is my last meeting. Wasn't anticipated to turn out this way. I had fully intended to be here for a number of years, but had a terrific career opportunity happen, so I'll be relocating to Northern California. And I just wanted to thank staff for all your assistance and thank the other commissioners. It's been a great learning experience. It's been an honor here to, to do this for the community. It is a lot of work being on the Planning Commission. I didn't realize that at the time. Having been a staff person, I knew that there was a lot of staff time being put on that end. But I don't know if it's because this is such a growing city or what, but there, I think the citizens really do owe a big honor to all of you for serving as commissioners and the time that you do dedicate to this because it is a dedication, and I want to thank everybody.
Well, I will miss you. I was looking forward to your economic development experience.
Yeah, we were.
So if you can find someone with that to replace you, that would be a good thing. Good luck in Northern California.
And same with, same with me. I wish you good luck, and it was nice having you as a neighbor.
Thank you.
On the dais.
I would like to reiterate that, too. I kind of like your professionalism and even though we were together for a short time, but I really loved your tie. So I, I want to wish you the best of luck. As you know, Northern California has a lot going on up there, so you will enjoy it.
Thank you.
Two items I have, did you have any, anyone else have any comments? Okay. We have this petition for community parks and public street improvements in our box. Are you aware of this, Lisa?
Yes, is that the one for the mosaic?
Yes, the homes, yeah, off of Garbarni.
Yep.
So just, what's the short answer to all these? And is anything happening with this?
The short answer is that our Engineering and Public Works Department is working with the developer on getting the improvements installed. But the, the timing on the installation isn't certain. It's something we're working on.
I know that development went bankrupt and then someone else bought it, so is the money there to build a park or not?
I don't believe Valleywide has a bond for the park improvements. They don't typically require bonds.
And what about the street improvements?
We do have bonds for the street improvements.
So you're addressing, have you, has the, have you, has the city, or anyone from the city addressed this group and communicated to them about this?
I believe we did send a response, and I think the response was from the mayor.
I did get a phone call from the mayor on this, and he says that the city manager and mayor have, are looking into it and addressing it.
Okay. Good. And then I just wanted to follow up. We had the email from about the property that was possibly going to the church, and he wanted to meet, and has anyone met with them? And have, or did we encourage him to do a workshop or what happened with that?
I...
Staff met with the developer previously. Russell, when you met with the Santiera Development, was a workshop encouraged?
Another workshop was encouraged, or at least individual meetings with commissioners just to kind of go over the designs.
So, okay, so they're probably not gonna hold a workshop then?
I did meet with them.
You did meet with them? Okay. What, what was?
And I, I encouraged them to have a workshop.
Okay.
And listened and looked at their proposal and listened to what they said.
Do you think they are going to hold a workshop, or should we go ahead and meet with them?
They were, they were reaching out individually. It's pretty simple, straightforward.
Okay, well, I may call them and, at, at the city offices and meet with them. Now, this is the project, this isn't the one on Marietta that, is this the one on Marietta?
Remember that?
A long skinny one?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's what I thought it was.
Yes, and so I, I'm sure that the residents in there would much prefer, in fact, I think that was even suggested instead of apartments, house, of church.
Yeah, the commissioners may want to meet with them then. I don't know if you know the history of this with you. I don't think they were around, were they?
Uh-uh.
No. There's a long skinny, off of Marietta, right, a long skinny lot, and the developer posed a lot of small homes crunched into an area. And we said, "Look," the surrounding neighbors freaked out, so rightfully so. So we suggested maybe a church, and they're actually taking us up on it. So I'm gonna call them and meet, obviously, in the city offices. And I would encourage you to do that as well, to possibly consider.
I was contacted by the, by email, by the developer, and I told the developer I wanted to meet with them, but the proposed buyer, I contacted them, and I told them I would meet with them to find out why they wanted the project and everything, and I haven't heard back from them yet. So I would be willing to meet with the buyer. I don't feel comfortable meeting with the developer on this thing and have them sell me, but the buyer are private, is a private group, and I'm more than happy to meet with them because they're gonna be the ones living here with it. So if they're watching, send me an email.
Okay. That's it for me. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Nothing from me.
Okay, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
And good luck. When do you move?
Next Friday.